Today is Tuesday, April 25th. The time is now 9:35. I call to order the meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Our invocation will be led by Reverend Ricky L. Crapp, President of the St. Luke Missionary Baptist Church. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor Pro Tem Crystal Smitherman. If you're willing and able, please stand and join us. Thank you.
We want to thank the mayor and the council for the opportunity as well as the encouragement to embrace our civic duty as local pastors. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of the community. Teach us of God to trust in you with all our heart and lean not to our own understanding in all of our ways. Acknowledge you, and you shall direct our path and our business and our homes and our communities. Father, just give us your divine peace as it passes all human understanders. Lead us by the still waters and give us your safety and your care. In Jesus' name, amen.
And salute the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the prayer of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Reverend, for that prayer. We appreciate it. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Clark. Will you call the roll?
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember O'Quinn. I'm sorry, Moore. He's absent, that's why. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Morning.
Morning. Councilmember Tate. Morning. Councilmember Williams. Good morning. Councilmember Woods. Council Pro Tem Smitherman. Good morning. Council President Alexander.
Good morning, President. Councilors and minutes are not ready for January 3rd through April 18th, 2023. Good morning, chiefs. Do we have communication from the mayor?
Good morning, Madam President, Madam Pro Tem, members of the council, members of the public. We do. I'll go to the podium. Madam President, members of the council, I'll work to be succinct. I know we have a full agenda. Administrative Professionals Week in celebration of Administrative Professionals Week, which is April 23rd through the 29th, Mayor Whitford would like to give a big hearty thank you to all of the administrators that are across the city of Birmingham. You all help keep us all on task, organized, and efficient. Our successes would not be possible without you. Again, on behalf of our Honorable Mayor, Happy Administrative Professionals Week. We greatly appreciate each and every one of you. In May 1963, almost 60 years ago, brave children as young as eight years old marched in Birmingham's streets on the battleground for social justice. Their heroic acts will be remembered on Friday, May 5th, as the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute hosts their sixth annual commemorative reenactment of the Historic Children's Crusade, also known as the Children's March. This annual event is designed to bring together current students from the greater Birmingham area and civil rights foot soldiers. The day will be filled with activities, engaging discussions, spoken word, and a culminating reenactment of the 1963 Children's March. For more information, go to bcri.org. The International Peace Conference, the Rotary International of Northern and Central Alabama and Partnership with the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute and the Institute for Human Rights at the University of Alabama at Birmingham, present the 2023 International Peace Conference, May 4th through 7th at the BJCC. People from across our nation and the globe will gather to highlight the pursuit of peace at all levels of society. This two-day immersive experience will bring together Rotarians and non-Rotarians and distinguished leaders in academia, government, public safety, religion, business, and community service to share ideas and propose solutions to some of society's most complex challenges. For more information, go to peaceconference2023bhame.com. Madam President, members of the council, members of the public, the city of Birmingham is still looking for dynamic servant-minded individuals to apply for our 10-week Summer Associate Vista Program. Vistas serving the city of Birmingham will experience working under Mayor Whitford's administration, and many work on the council side too, at least a couple, on various special projects within city departments and park recreation facilities. Ideal candidates will provide aid in one of the following focus areas: economic opportunity, healthy futures, and drug prevention. Applications are due by Friday, May 5th. If you're interested, please go to my.americord.gov to create a profile and to apply. Rental assistance. Birmingham residents who need rental assistance, who need assistance with their rent and utilities, you can please reach out to the Department of Community Development. Help is definitely available for all of our qualified applicants. You can go to birminghamal.gov/renthelp or call 205-254-2309. Couple more, Madam President and members of the council. Bulk trash. The city of Birmingham will continue to keep residents informed about bulk trash pickup with daily updates online at birminghamal.gov/bolttrash. Also, the second phase of our uniform garbage cart distribution has begun. Letters went out, as we discussed, councilors, to the residents who are in this next group, specifying their new pickup date and detailing next steps. As a reminder for those residents already using the new carts, you should place them in the front of your homes. Any household garbage placed on the ground in alleys or the ground in front of your residents will not be picked up. You can receive more updates by going to birminghamal.gov/pickup or by texting BHAMEREADY to 888-777. Madam President, today we want to pay tribute to our city's library workers with a special presentation. So, at this time, I would like to ask Ms. Janine Langston, who serves as our Executive Director of the Birmingham Public Library, and all of her guests to please join me here at the podium. As they come, Madam President and members of the council, we just want to acknowledge the fact that our library workers are the backbone of the library system. They contribute their expertise, their passion, and their leadership skills to promote access to information, lifelong learning, and civic engagement. Today, we are recognizing Library Workers' Day with a proclamation that reads in part: "Whereas National Library Workers' Day (NLWD) is an annual observance that recognizes the valuable contributions made by library workers to our communities. Whereas library workers play a vital role in the intellectual and cultural development of our society, connecting individuals with the resources they need to expand their knowledge and enrich their lives. Whereas library workers are often unsung heroes, working tirelessly behind the scenes to make our libraries vibrant, engaging, and inclusive places for all." Now therefore, I stand on behalf of our Honorable Mayor Randall L. Whitford, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 25th, 2023 as National Library Workers' Day. On this day, we recognize and honor their contributions to their communities and the nation as a whole. And we encourage all of our residents, please visit your local library. Thank your library workers for the dedicated service they provide in transforming lives and communities through education and lifelong learning. We urge everyone to take a moment to reflect on the essential role that library workers play in our communities and to express our gratitude for their commitment, dedication, and hard work. Let's give them a round of applause. Ms. Janine Langston will come and share a few words. Ms. Janine.
Chief Sparks, President Alexander, President Pro Tem Smitherman, city councilors and guests, good morning and thank you for this opportunity to recognize National Library Workers' Day. This is National Library Workers' Week, excuse me, National Library Week. Today is a special day where we honor and recognize our workers, and I have quite a few of them with me here, and we have a huge team back, ready to serve our patrons on the job today. We also have several of our board members with us. We have Ms. Yolanda Hardy, R. Jordan Davis, Mona Lisa Morris, Lynn Flowers Martin, and Jermaine Johnson, and we thank them for their leadership as our board members. The Birmingham Public Library has been serving the city of Birmingham for 137 years, and we take pride in our ability to adapt to the ever-changing needs of our community by continually expanding our collections, services, and partnerships. Along with Chief Sparks and Mayor Whitford, I encourage everyone to visit a Birmingham Public Library today. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. If you'll just hold on one minute. When I read last night, I did see that this is Library Week, and as a former library board member, as well as I worked work-study at Mervyn Stern Library when I was over at UAB, so I know just enough to be dangerous about the system that you use. I'm sure it's all automated now and everything, but I'm just so excited to see you all. I saw you in the audience, and I kept thinking, where's everybody else here? I got scared. Jermaine Funnyman was there. What's going on? What's going on? So, I'm so happy, though, to see the board members and the staff that serve our city so well. We know that libraries are the heartbeat of our community, and they offer so much, not only for our children, but for residents just throughout the city. And I just want to say personally, I appreciate the work that you all do in each of our communities. I'm always in competition with Pro Tem here. She has that Tiddlesville Library just, they're doing something all the time. So, I'm over there pouting, saying, come on, Ms. Green, let's get it going. And so, I do appreciate you, but great to see all of you. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just had to say that although you're not a secret, the library system in Birmingham is the best-kept secret we have. You know, people think they need to go to the internet for everything, but half the stuff on the internet is lies and erroneous information. You know, Tucker Carlson's probably on the internet. So, I'm just saying, y'all have the real, the real information, and people should take advantage of the libraries more because the people who work at the libraries, as you know, are all very helpful people, always with a smile on their face. You know, the library is just a different world, and people aren't taking, I don't believe, advantage as much as they used to. But, gosh, you know, if I could count the times people say, well, I read it on the internet, like, that makes it a fact. If you read it on the internet, it's probably not true. You know, let's face it, you can say anything. So, I thank you for the work you do, and I thank you for the attitudes everybody has at the, everybody's willing to help, everybody asks you if they can help. That doesn't happen very many places anymore. It's like, duck your head, and maybe they won't notice you're here. So, thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Clark.
I just want to thank you too for, especially the activities at the Five Points West Regional Library, which is kind of the heartbeat of my area where I live, and, I mean, it just serves so many purposes, and it's a safe haven for our youth. It is a place to get on the internet for people who, for people who don't have, who don't otherwise have access. But, I guess while you're there, you can also read a book. But, you know, I've seen how it functions as a safe haven and a place for kids whose grandmothers need a break to hang out in a place where they can do their homework and, you know, read a book, you know, leisurely read a book. And, I mean, it's a critical resource in our communities, and I just want, and as Counselor Abbott mentioned, you know, the willingness to help, the attitude, and our seniors have been doing some pretty incredible things in Five Points West, and they really value the programs and services. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Madam Pro Tem.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the board, first of all. You all and Counselor Moore for really being able to try, kind of transform the board, right? So, Funnyman, we have everybody on here. Y'all really took the charge on helping to fundraise our libraries, for example. I really enjoyed the, was it Novel Taste? Novel Taste, I think that's been amazing. Funnyman was like, okay, we gonna fundraise, but y'all gotta support us, and I think they really excelled. And as you were talking about Tiddlesville Library and Western Library, the libraries aren't just a place to check out books. You all have transformed the libraries, like my district, for diaper banks, for single moms in need. We have senior assistants getting food boxes, I mean, hundreds of senior assistants getting them wraparound services, text preparation, tutoring. I mean, I can't imagine all the things you guys have done, and so, you know, I think one of the first adults we meet as children are our librarians. You know, I remember going as a child to a librarian, teaching me, like, hey, maybe you should think about that book to read. And so, I want you guys to know that we will always support you, we're always here, and thank you for all that you do. I don't think we ever say that publicly enough, thank you, seriously, because without you all, this city wouldn't be where it is now. So, thank you.
Thank you again.
One more presentation, Madam President, on behalf of the mayor. Today, on his behalf, I'm happy to welcome students from the Phillips Academy Beta Club team, as well as teachers, Ms. Latricia Diller and Latisa Phillips, and Principal Reynetta Wiggins. If you all could, please join us at the podium, bring these dynamic students with you. Madam President, members of the council, earlier this year, the Phillips Academy Beta Club competed in the National Beta Club State Convention, and they placed in seven events. The team was successful in mathematics, sixth and seventh grade, language arts, arts, fourth, fifth, and eighth grade, science, sixth grade, and Quiz Bowl Middle School. The Beta Club has existed for 12 years, and this is the first time the school has won in seven categories. On behalf of the mayor, he wants to congratulate the students, parents, teachers, and school leadership on this huge accomplishment. The students are now preparing for an even bigger contest, and that will be the National Beta Club Competition, which will be held in July. They will compete online. The mayor would also like to commend the students for winning a community service award from the National Beta Club. They received the award because they had more than 3,000 community service hours as a club between the fall of 2022 and today. I get the opportunity oftentimes to see Counselor O'Quinn at the school. We end up sharing that space a lot together. Principal Wiggins will now come up and have a few words, but again, let's celebrate these dynamic students. Principal Wiggins.
On behalf of Ms. Wiggins, who is not able to be here, I would like to just thank everyone for inviting us out, especially Mr. Sparks. Our students have worked so hard to achieve all of their goals this year, and will continue to work hard as they remain Beta Club members throughout their years at Phillips Academy. Some of the pillars of Beta Club, sorry, is character, achievement, leadership, and service, and all of our students have done a dynamic job of exhibiting all of those characteristics. I would like to thank our principal, again, who's not here, as well as our parents. Without the support of our parents, our students would not be able to achieve the goals that they have this year. So, special thank you to all of our parents who are here today, as well as those parents who are not able to be here, as well as special thank you to each and every one of you all who are role models for our students and continue to motivate our students each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, if we could, we'll just have each student come up, give their name, give their grade, and then that'll conclude the mayor's report.
Hi, my name is Quillan Perkins, and I placed third in the science sixth grade Beta Club, at the Beta Club Convention.
Hi, my name is Preston Jenkins, and we placed fourth place in math for eighth grade.
My name is Joaquin McKelvey, and we placed third in Quiz Bowl.
My name is Carson Diller, and I placed second place in math.
My name is Kennedy Greer, and I placed first place in language arts.
My name is Kennedy Simon, and I placed fourth in Eager Slayers Art.
My name is Hayden Strong, and I placed third place in math.
My name is Caleb Lewis, and I placed first place in language arts.
Congratulations, Madam President and members of the council. That concludes the mayor's report.
I'm just so excited to see these teachers or advisors, as well as the students. I heard language arts, math, just all the other subjects that you were champions in. We really appreciate, we're looking at the future of the city of Birmingham here, so I just appreciate the work that you all do, as well as in the classroom and helping your students, and just so proud of these young people. Thank you so much for representing us and yourselves so well. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules so that we can have our presentations today. We actually have three presentations, and I'll start first with Counselor Tate from District Nine. She has a presentation for Wilkinson Middle School and George Washington Carver High School.
Thank you, Madam President and council. Good morning. This is the Carver High School soccer team, doing some great things at Carver, and Coach Tanille Marshall is someone that I grew up with and went to school with, and he's doing an amazing job, so I want to present a resolution to them. I'm gonna read just a few snippets of it, whereas the individual and team championships are highly sought after in high school sports. The legislative body commends rare athletic achievements and pays special recognition to those who pursue such excellence and become examples for youth in our great city, and whereas the council of the city of Birmingham is justly proud to congratulate the Carver High School boys' soccer team on capturing five area championships during their 2023 season. Carver High School soccer team holds the distinction as the only city which has won five championships in soccer during the season in the history of Birmingham city schools. The Rams also won the first Birmingham school's tournament in soccer, and whereas to praise and applause to their excited fans, on April 20th, 2023, the Carver High School varsity soccer team won their home conference game against Jasper, Alabama, by a score of two to one. Proudly donning the school's color of crimson, blue, and white, family and friends and the community at large loyally supported the Rams throughout their journey as they ended their season with an impressive overall record. Now therefore, be it resolved that the council of the city of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Whitford concurring, pauses in its deliberation to congratulate members of the Carver High School soccer team on capturing a five-area championship during their 2023 season and for their outstanding overall team record presented this 25th day of April, April 2023 at the recommendation of Counselor Latonya A.
Tate. Counselors, I move that we move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
And now the item, I should have said unanimous consent. Now the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna have the coach to come up and say a few words, and also the team to introduce themselves.
Good morning. I'd like to thank Counselor Tate for bringing us here today, and all the councilmen. We've been fighting hard for the last 11 years. We've been letting everybody know we're from Birmingham. We go to the county, we leave our mark there. Now they know who Carver are. I'd just like to say thank you, thank you for bringing us here this morning, to recognize my boys. It's my boys. They can get 40 years old and still my boy. They know I go to bat for them, they'll go to bat for me on their feet. So, I just say thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Madam President.
My name is Jose Fernandez Villarreal.
My name is Christopher Renantia, I'm in the eighth grade.
My name is Diego Santiago.
And give us your grade, your name and your grade.
Ten.
Thank you.
Morning, my name is Alex Flores, and I'm in the eighth grade.
Good morning, my name is Jacob Wood, I'm in the 10th grade, can't talk, got hurt the other night.
My name is Amarius Murray, I'm in the ninth grade.
Hey, good morning, my name is Ellis Alcantara, I'm the 10th grade.
My name is Jonathan Rosales, and I'm in the seventh grade.
My name is Gustavo Garcia, and I'm in the 12th grade.
Good morning, my name is Eduardo Deobaye, I'm 12th grade.
Morning, my name is John Perez Vasquez, I'm in eighth grade.
Morning, my name is Santos Arias Perez, I'm in 11th grade.
My name is Joel Rios, and I'm in the ninth grade.
Hey, I'm Gabriel Ramos, and I'm in the 12th grade.
Good morning, my name is Jose Alecora, and I'm a 10th grader.
Thank you, Madam President. Now, Madam President, I'm an ex-Wickerson Middle School girls and boys basketball team, and the coaches to join me at the podium. And I do recognize as they come forward, I believe you have two school board members that are in the audience today, they'll just stand and be recognized. Two school board members, members of the school board. Latonya and Jason. Thank you. Thank you.
We are waiting on Wickerson.
Are they in the hallway, or are they on their way? In the hall?
In the conference room.
Okay, perfect, okay.
My name is Joel Rios, and I'm in the ninth grade.
Hey, I'm Gabriel Ramos, and I'm in the 12th grade.
Good morning. My name is Jose Alecana, and I'm a 10th grader.
Thank you, Madam President. Now, Madam President, I'm an ex- Wilkinson Middle School girls and boys basketball team. And the coaches to join me at the podium.
And I do recognize as they come forward, I believe you have two school board members that are in the audience today. They'll just stand and be recognized. Two school board members, members of the school board. Latonye and Jason Meadows. Thank you.
We are waiting on Wilkinson.
Okay. Are they in the hallway or are they on their way in the hall?
In the conference room.
Okay, perfect, okay.
All right. Okay, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor. This is the Malachi Wilkinson Boys and Girls Middle School basketball. And pay special recognition to those who pursue such excellence and become examples and inspiration for the youth of this great city. Whereas on Saturday, January 21, 2023, at We Know Our High School in Birmingham, Alabama, to praise and applause to their excited fans, both teams defeated their opponents. The boys team outscored Phillips Academy 52 to 31, and girls team outscored Smith Middle School 52 to 28. And whereas in a sport such as basketball, which demands athletic power, speed, and agility, Ability Coordinator James Rick Calhoun, Boys Head Coach Cory Dorsey, and Assistant Coach Kenneth Smith, and Girls Head Coach Edward Lynn, and Assistant Coach Jalisa Daniels have worked hard to hone the skills of this team, teaching their outstanding athletes lessons which will prove invaluable both on and off the court. Now therefore, it be resolved that the council of the city of Birmingham with Mayor Randall L. Wolfing concurring pauses in its deliberations to congratulate members of the Malachi Wilkinson Middle Schools Boys and Girls Basketball Teams on capturing the 2023 Middle School Basketball City Championship for their outstanding season and overall record presented on this 25th day of April 2023, at the recommendation of Councilor Latonye A. Tate. Congratulations.
Counselors, I move for unanimous consent.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor.
Now the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam President. I am going to have the coaches to come up and say a few words. It is a lot of students here, so, oh my God, how are we gonna do that? So we'll let them say something. I want to acknowledge the board president, Jason Meadows, also for being here as well. So I'm gonna step back and let the coaches come up.
Good morning to the council. Councilwoman Tate, thank you for having us. My name is Jalisa Daniels. I'm the assistant head coach for the girls team. And to this team, I just want to say you guys have made me so proud. You've made your school proud, your principals, your coaches. These girls and guys put in a lot of hard work, tirelessly dead end, taking a lot of criticisms. But you guys, you stayed the course. You trusted us, most importantly, and we got the job done. So I just want to say congratulations to my teams again, and we are proud of you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you all for having us. I'm Cory Dorsey, head coach of the boys. I just want to say that I'm extremely proud of my guys. From the first day of practice, we all set our goals for our team and individual goals. And one of the goals that we set for our team was to go undefeated. We didn't capture that. We went 22 and 1. We lost one game by two points over the Christmas break. But all in all, our guys, they came in, they bought in, they worked hard. And I just want to tell the guys, congratulations, and just thanks for all you did to make this season a success.
Good morning. Rick Calhoun, Eligibility Coordinator, as well as Athletic Director at Wilkinson Middle School. Correction, that's winning Wilkinson Middle School. That's what we call ourselves, that's what we're known by. And we're also an academic institution as well. Many of our students are doing well, honoritous students. And I just want you to know that we are representing both academically and athletically. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to say thank you, Councilor Tate, for always caring about the students and the constituency of District Nine. It means a lot to honor these young people. I just want to say to you all that, you know, this is just the beginning of your careers and success. And I hope that you embrace this moment. This is where you belong. And in the words of your coach, if you work hard, there's nothing that you can't accomplish. So I hope you all take this moment to heart and look around and see this space and say every day, I'm striving for excellence because that's within me. So again, thank you, Councilor Tate. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Would you allow the students to?
Certainly. Give us your name and your grade.
Name and your grade. Gonna start right here.
Oh, I'm in eighth grade. My name is Kumiya.
Thank you.
I'm in eighth grade, and my name is Kanadi Jones.
Neil Brown, eighth grade.
Marjorie Gisbert, seventh grade.
Messiah Pierce, eighth grade.
All right.
Eric Wells, eighth grade.
I'm Jordan Hill, and I'm in eighth grade.
Jamaya Smith, seventh grade.
Jalen Benjamin, eighth grade.
Kenyon Davis, eighth grade.
Ian Thompson, seventh grade.
Robert Taylor, eighth grade.
Caleb Johnson, eighth grade.
Cameron Scoville, eighth grade.
Damazia Taylor, eighth grade.
Devonte Penn, eighth grade.
Uncle Nury Scott, seventh grade.
Christina Williams, eighth grade.
Olivia Jones, eighth grade.
Caitlin Jackson, eighth grade.
Kumiya Feld, eighth grade.
Councilor Tate, we have the assistant principal out there. I just know he's got to come up. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the board. Just want to say how proud we are. Representing myself and Principal Jennifer Love-Lott of Malachi Wilkinson Middle School, the administration, faculty, and staff. We've seen them put in long hours in practice and on the court. And we want to say again how proud we are. Not only are they athletes, but they are scholar athletes. So congratulations to our coaches and all of our players. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to say personally, I'm proud of you.
That concludes me, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President and counsel.
Thank you all so much. Council Clark?
I can't resist. My cousin is out there, Coach Calhoun, and we used to walk to Wilkinson School together. And it was an excellent school then. It's an excellent school now. I couldn't be more proud. So just look, that's the path from Wilkinson to right here. So y'all, so think about that. Thank you.
And I just want to say, your coach said it, said, I think your coach said, you were criticized while you were getting to this point. And I just want to tell you all, just remember, the more you win, the more the criticism begins. So don't let that ever stop you. Your coach said you set goals. I want you to continue to set goals in life. If you fall short, get up, get back up, and keep it going. Thank you all so much. All right, thank you. Our next presentation is by Council Pro Tim Smitherman and Councilor Clark. They're gonna do a tag team here.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the city council. Ms. Huff, please come up, please. And any of her guests as well. I should tell you, Madam President, this is one of your sorrows. She's a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha, yes. So we're really here today to really give recognition for Ms. Huff and all that she has done and continues to do for the Boy Scouts. You know, Ms. Huff, I didn't even remember until I was sitting up there that my great-grandmother, Thelma Catlin, was actually a Boy Scout troop leader for, I think, Sixth Avenue for a long time. So she taught a lot of the male leaders that we see today, but she took the time out to do that as well. So I know how important your job is. And so really, we're just here to acknowledge her because she was the recipient of the Silver Antelope Award. And so this is the second highest national award presented by the Boy Scouts of America. This exemplifies the principle of achievement to recognize extraordinary commitment to scouting and to the youth. She is a native of Birmingham, Alabama. She is truly, it's truly an honor for her to have this. And so this award was created in 1942, and this is done acting through the National Corps of Honor. And so not only she began her scouting journey as an Assistant Scout Master for Troop 415 at Sixth Avenue Baptist Church in Birmingham, Alabama, where her only son Matthew Huff achieved the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. She was also elected to join a whole bunch of other awards and the Order of the Arrow. But really, this is to add on to some more awards that she has gotten. Distinguished Eagle Scout Award, this award, the Whitney M. Young Junior Award, and so much more. In addition to being a scout leader, she is a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. She is a Silver Star slash Life slash Target Member of Phi I Omega Chapter in Birmingham, Alabama, and she continues to serve as a role model to other adults who provide leadership to youth through the Boy Scouts of America. So now I'll let Council Clark speak. Thank you, Madam Pro Tim. Yeah, so scouting is an old American tradition with the mission of preparing young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes. And today, I'm proud to co-present this resolution with Madam Pro Tim Smitherman to a longtime District Eight resident in the Enslie Highlands neighborhood. And she and her husband Willie Huff, both of whom I've known for many years, still maintain a really beautiful home on a street that, it's a short street, but it used to have a lot of distinguished residents like my former boss Bernard Kincaid and the late Wash Booker and many others who have left for various reasons. But they've stayed. And we're really, in District Eight, we're really proud of this high accomplishment. On behalf of your District Eight neighbors, I want to congratulate you for actively participating and demonstrating exemplary leadership at the highest levels of scouting, not only for, you know, the intelligence and dignity that you bring, but also the diversity at the highest levels of scouting. So thank you. Ms. Huff, yes, let's give her a round of applause. And as always, thank you, Mr. Robert Young, for sending us that article and giving us that information and always keeping us informed about what the Boy Scouts are doing. So Ms. Huff, would you like to say a few words? Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
So I have quite a few words, if you'll indulge me. Good morning. I'm Deborah Huff from the Enslie Highlands neighborhood of Birmingham. Thank you, President Alexander, President Pro Tim Smitherman, and Councilor Clark, for this recognition of service to scouting on behalf of the volunteers and staff and the young people of the Greater Alabama Council. I thank the Birmingham City Council for your continued support of us over the years. The Boy Scouts of America continues to need youth and volunteers and supporters who are looking for something to do for the next few years. The mission of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the Scout Oath and Law. And we have a lot of people who always say that they have some kind of connection to Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. So I just want to remind you of what the Scout Oath and the Scout Law are. On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country and to obey the Scout Law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. The Scout Law consists of 12 laws. A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. The vision of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare every eligible youth in America to become a responsible, participating citizen and leader who is guided by the Scout Oath and Law. We offer five programs according to age and activities. The Cub Scouts, the Scouts BSA, venturing, Sea Scouts, exploring, and we also have STEM Scouts. You may have all heard about the Eagle Scouts. Our overall goal is not to produce Eagle Scouts. Our goal is for every scout to attain the first-class rank and show that they have learned the basic camping and outdoor skills and knowledge about citizenship and leadership to make them good leaders. The scouts from Fairfield Troop 495, who went to the Vulcan Campere a month ago, won't forget the importance of packing warm and dry rainwear. From there, they can continue to the Eagle Scout rank, or they can explore leadership training, or work at summer camp, or become a member of the Order of the Arrow, which we recognize as our honor society, or participate in high adventure programs at one of our four national high adventure bases, or attend national and World Scout Jamborees, or participate in international scouting, like attending the World Scout Jamboree this summer in South Korea. Scouts can explore a minimum of 22 of 135 merit badges, which gives scouts the opportunity to explore new things and determine if they want to continue doing something or not. How can you, how can the citizens of Birmingham help? We need merit badge counselors. There's something for everyone in the Boy Scouts of America, whether they are boys and girls, male and female adults, or identify as LGBTQ+. We have plenty of boys and girls who could join our programs, but we need more committed adults like former Scout Master Daryl Henson, and also Robert Young from Sixth Avenue Baptist Church as Troop 415. And Robert is now a professional scouter. And there is Troop 495 Scout Master Leroy Simmons of Fairfield. Scout Master Simmons alone remains as our longest-serving Black Scout Master in the Birmingham area for more than 24 years. Unfortunately, scouting is not something you can just drop your kid off and leave it to other adults to take care of your child. The Cub Scout program is family-centered with something for everyone in the middle school. Scouts BSA is for middle to high school ages and takes a minimum of four years to get a Scouts BSA scout to the rank of Eagle Scout. Parents and leaders need to educate themselves on how to make that a reality. How can this happen? We need more registered volunteers and especially more merit badge counselors. Founder Lord Baden Powell said that scouting is a game. Scouts can have fun and learn new things about themselves and the world by playing this scouting game. I thank you for this recognition this morning. I thank you for your continued support of the Boy Scouts of America, and particularly the Greater Alabama Council, and continue to do what you do as leaders for our community and for this city and our state. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Huff. Sian Mitchell, or Robert Young, or anybody else, would you all like to speak?
Just have one quick thing. First of all, once again, we'd like to say thank you all. Thank the city for recognizing Ms. Huff. First of all, nobody's mentioned this, but she's the only, she's the only fourth African-American woman in the nation to actually receive this award. There have also never been, there hasn't been an African-American male from Birmingham to ever receive this award. So I want to let everybody know how important and how much work she's put into what she's done. This Thursday, we're having our annual American Values launching at the Civic Center. I think I sent most of you, sent out each one of you an invitation to that. So that's gonna be this Thursday at noon at BJCC. And our guest speaker this year is Bruce Pearl, the Auburn basketball coach. And we would like to love to hear each one of you here to attend. One of the things Ms. Huff mentioned is that we don't have problems recruiting kids. One of the big problems, the biggest problem we have is adults stepping up to the role. Now, we're talking about all the violence and everything that happens within our city. What we want to do is get people involved to really help educate our youth to responsibility and helping make decisions, make positive decisions.
I thank you for your continued support of the Boy Scouts of America and particularly the Greater Alabama Council, and continue to do what you do as leaders for our community and for this city and our state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Huff. Sonia Mitchell or Robert Young or anybody else, would you all like to speak?
Just have one quick thing. First of all, once again, we'd like to say thank you all, thank the city for recognizing Ms. Huff. First of all, nobody's mentioned this, but she's the only, she's the only fourth African-American woman in the nation to actually receive this award. There have also never been, there hasn't been an African-American male from Birmingham to ever receive this award. So I want to let everybody know how important and how much work she's put into what she's done. This Thursday, we're having our annual American Values launching at the Civic Center. I think I've sent most of you, sent out each one of you an invitation to that, so that's going to be this Thursday at noon at BJCC. And our guest speaker this year is Bruce Pearl, the Auburn basketball coach, and we would like to, love to hear each one of you here to attend. One of the things Ms. Huff mentioned is that we don't have problems recruiting kids. One of the big problems, the biggest problem we have is adults stepping up to the role. Now, we're talking about all the violence and everything that happens within our city. What we want to do is get people involved to really help educate our youth to responsibility and helping make decisions, make positive decisions, and helping them understand what the role of a citizen in this community, citizen is. Three of the merit badges that we require are citizenship in the community, citizenship in the nation, citizenship in the state. And we've added a new one because of all the times that things that have gone on called citizenship in society, which helps, tries to help deal with all the changes and why people are dealing with what we're doing. But, but I wanted to commend Judge Sparks because he's actually recognized the part, recognized what he needs to do. So he's restarted the troop at his church to help try to do this. We like to ask all the pastors who are listening, we have a program that's called Faith-Based Initiative, where we assist churches in starting troops. So if they'd like to do that, we'd really like to assist in that. And Counselor Clark and School Board Smith recognize what we try to do in the schools because we try to do everything in the schools. We brought different programs to all, to many of our schools in the city. So thank you for doing this, and we hope, we look forward to working with the city and anything we can do to help our youth.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, I'm Sonia Smith, School Board Representative for District Eight. Thank you to Counselors Clark and Counselor Smithman for this award, for Deborah Huff. Ms. Huff is a neighbor and a friend, a mentor, and a soror. So I'm really proud to be here to stand beside you as you receive this honor today for the council. Ms. Huff has given us a charge, so I don't think there's much more to say beyond that. So I hope that we can see the mission of the Boy Scouts of America through. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I would like to move for unanimous consent.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Move the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you, Madam President.
I thank you very much, and again, we're very excited for your accomplishments. As already been said, yes, Mrs. Huff is a fellow member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and so I'm very proud of your accomplishments. We know achievement is the standard, right? But thank you.
I'll give you that one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. All right, Counselors. Yes, please. Mr. Huff, thank you.
...in the business of the Birmingham community, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all. All right, Counselors, at this time, we will prepare ourselves for consideration of the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, would you read those items for us?
Consent agenda starts on page two with item one. Skip over to page six, we have item two on consent. Page seven, we have items three and four on consent. Page eight, items five, six, and seven are on consent. Page nine, we have items eight and nine on consent. Page 10, item number 10 is on consent. Page 11, we have items 11 and 12 on consent. Page 12, we have items 13, 14, and 15 designated as consent. Page 13, we have item number 16 on consent. Page 14, item 17 is on consent. Page 15, item 18 is on consent. Skip over to page 18, we have items 19 and 20 on consent. Page 19, items 21 and 22 are on consent. Page 20, items 23 and 24 are on consent. Page 21, there's been a request to remove item number 25 from consent and withdrawn from the agenda as well. Page 22, item 30 is on consent. Page 23, items 31, 32, and 33 are on consent. Page 24, items 34, 35, 36, and 37 are on consent. Page 25, we have items 38, 39, and 40 on consent. Page 26, we have items 42, 43, 44, 45, and 46 on consent. Page 27, items 47, 48, 49, and 50 are on consent. Page 28, items 51, 52, 53, and 54 are on consent. Page 29, items 55, 56, 57, and 58 are on consent. Page 30, items 59, 60, 61, and 62 are on consent. Page 31, items 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, and 69 are on consent. And we have one addendum item.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselors, are there any items you'd like to have removed or added to consent? Dr. O'Quinn?
Page 22, item 30, and I'd like to remove that from consent. Also, on page 23, item 31, and on page 24, item 34.
All right, thank you. Yes, that was request to remove from consent. Item number, excuse me, flipping the pages. Item 30 on page 22, item 31 on page 23, and item 34 on page 24. Any other items, Counselors? Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to remove item 33 from consent.
That's a request to remove item 33 on page 23 from consent. Any other items, Counselors? All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. All matters of permanent operation, those are indicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Counselors, if I can entertain a motion and a second for approval of consent agenda.
Move for approval?
Agreed.
All right, I have Counselor Moore and Counselor Tate. Voting should be open about now. All right, that vote should be up.
All right, thank you. The items considered for consent have been approved. If you have an item that was listed on the consent agenda, it has been approved. We hope you have a great day. We'll continue now with the rest of our agenda. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, if you'll read the first item.
All right. Again, item 25 is withdrawn, and the next item should be item 26. Item 26, in ordinance to amend Title 3A Revenue and Taxation, Chapter 6, Lodging and Hotel Tax, Article A, General Provisions, Section 30, Section 3A dash 6 dash 5, Filing of Returns, Payment of Tax, Annual Return and Payment for Book Submissions of the General Code of the City of Birmingham to clarify the requirement for returns when no taxes due from the taxpayer. This is an item of permanent operation, and you see to pass it today.
Motion for unanimous consent?
Counselors, are we allowed to entertain all three together, or do we have to do them separate?
Unless one...
Because one may not pass.
On the UC part, yeah.
Yeah, let's go ahead and just do it individually.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item.
All right, item is before you.
All right, Counselors, this is an ordinance to amend the Title 3A Revenue and Taxation. We did discuss during pre-council, and there was an explanation as to why this is coming forth. Chief, if you'll just reiterate why these items are before us.
So just to summarize all of them, that was not a word. We're basically, we're taking, just being consistent with all of our taxes to make sure that they all basically speak the same language. So if somebody, a taxpayer, a business owner, a person will come in and file their taxes, even if they don't have anything to file, they must file zero, just to acknowledge that they have nothing to file. So this is just to be consistent with all the rest of our other taxes.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions regarding this item? We're ready for the vote.
All right, the vote should be up.
All right, thank you. Item 26 passes. Next item.
All right, she got item 27, in ordinance to amend Title 3A Revenue and Taxation, Chapter 2, Occupational Tax, Article A, General Provisions, Section 3A dash 2 dash 5, Filing of Returns, Employers, Employees, Annual Filing of the Reconciliation of Returns, Payment of Tax, Book Submissions, as adopted and amended the General Code of the City of Birmingham to clarify the requirement for the returns when no taxes due from the taxpayer. Again, an item of permanent operation, and you see passed today. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion.
Move the item.
All right, Counselors, same issue. This again is an ordinance to amend Title 3A Revenue and Taxation, and this is for returns when no taxes due from the taxpayer. Any questions? We're ready for the vote.
All right, that vote should be up.
All right, thank you, Counselors. Item 27 passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 28, in ordinance to amend Title 3A Revenue and Taxation, Chapter 5, Lease Tax, Article A, General Provisions, Section 3A dash 5 dash 5, Filing of Returns and Payment of Tax, the General Code, the City of Birmingham to clarify the requirement for returns when no taxes due from the taxpayer. Then you see again to pass today. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion.
All right, Counselors, this is also an ordinance, and this one is in relationship to, I believe it said lease taxes. Yes, lease tax on this particular item. Any questions regarding the item?
Madam President?
Yes, Madam President.
Yeah, I just wanted to say and reiterate, if I can say that, what my colleague said during pre-council is, everything that comes before us should go to a committee. Now, this one strikes me that it should be in Budget and Finance, but it might be in Administration. Doesn't really matter. The explanation this morning was good, but it should go to commit, everything that appears on our agenda should go to committee so that someone has taken a, you know, closer look at it.
Thank you, and I believe it was duly noted by the chief that you will take that consideration.
Yes, we fully acknowledge that it will work with the Madam President to see what committee that will fall under.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? We're ready for the vote, Mr. Clerk. Oh, sorry. I need to vote.
Vote should be up.
All right, thank you. Item 28 passes. Next item.
Item 29, ordinance authorize the mayor to, one, execute assignment of contract for sale of real estate between RLR Investments LLC and RMR Land Corporation, under which RLR Investments will assign to Raymar Land Corporation its interest in the contract for sale of real estate between the City of Birmingham and RLR Investments dated October the 4th, 2022, as amended January 16th, 2023, for the sale of approximately 67.4 acres of property located in the Daniel Payne Industrial Park to RLR Investments for an estimated total purchase price of $3,707,000. And two, executing amendment number two to contract for sale of real estate, under which the contract is amended, will be further amended to extend its inspection period to June the 15th, 2023. This is also an item of permanent operation, and you see to pass it today. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item.
Item is before you.
All right, Counselors, this is an ordinance for the sale of property in the Daniel Payne Industrial Park. Any questions? Yes?
Yes, I just wanted to understand, I know we're, one company's assigning their rights to another company, and they're extending the inspection period, and so it'll end up being about a year and nine months that we're agreeing to hold the sales price the same. I'm just wondering, are they going to do the same thing the original party was going to do, and it's just a different party who's going to own the property, or?
Madam President?
Yes.
Yes, we have Ms. Janice Dothard, Counselor Clark, from our Office of Innovation and Economic Opportunity, and she'll speak to your question.
Okay, thank you.
Morning, Counselor.
Good morning, Ms. Dothard.
Uh, Counselor Clark, it was the same company, just another one of their company names that they're taking the title of property in, or Raymar is still part of RLR. So this is the same people that's been under the contract.
Okay, and the extensions are being caused by what?
Ms. Dothard, if you'd just speak to my...
The extensions, the first extension, that they needed to do a Phase 2 environmental assessment, and that phase did not allow them time to be able to come back to ZAC. So their contract would end maybe second, and they need to meet with ZAC, I think, by the 2nd and over 16th. So this is going to allow them, that's why they asked for, to June 15th, for them to be able to meet with our staff and review everything.
Okay, I'm just getting a smile because I'm thinking about how long you've been selling this industrial park. At least 30 years.
You're right. 30 plus, but, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Dothard. Any other questions? All right, we're ready for the vote.
That vote should be up.
Thank you. Item 29 passes. Counselors, if you would allow, if we could take items 30, 31, and 34, we could consider them all as one motion, and we'll let the clerk read those.
Item 30, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to provide community grant forgivable loan to 1520 Partners LLC for $50,000 for a term of up to five years for facade improvements at 1527th Avenue North, Birmingham. Item 31, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to provide a community block grant forgivable loan to 5503 Investments LLC, doing business at Woodlawn Theater for $52,266.25, a term of up to five years for facade improvements at 5503 First Avenue North, Birmingham. And item number 34, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to provide a community block grant forgivable loan to KGB Group LLC, doing business at 1102 for $49,263, a term of up to five years for facade improvements at 301, Reverend Abraham Woods Jr., Boulevard, Birmingham. I need a motion on those items.
Move the item. Second.
Thank you. Dr. O'Quinn, you'd ask for these to be moved off consent?
Yes, so my question is generally about these facade improvements. Do we have an idea of, have the property owners provided like a scope of work or renderings or the materials that they're going to use? You know, one of these is in the historic part of Woodlawn, the, another one is in close proximity, it leads to the National Monument. So I'm just trying to understand, because I did look at the contract, and there's not any rendering or anything in there, so I just want to get some understanding as to whether or not we're setting a standard for these facade improvements that the property owners are going to be utilizing these funds to achieve.
Madam President?
Yes, Chief.
Counselor O'Quinn, we have Ms. Wendy Hicks and Ms. Larisha Hindbotham from our Community Development Department that'll come up and speak to it.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. Good morning. I serve as the program manager for the facade improvement program, and in regards to your question, yes, we request the renderings in advance. If they do not have renderings already, we will assist with hiring an architect to complete those renderings, and we have to approve them prior to approval for the program.
So do you have the renderings for these properties? I would greatly appreciate being able to... I would greatly appreciate being able to take a look at those.
We can get those to you.
Any other questions?
And I would say, you know, as future items come forward, it would be really valuable to us to be able to, you know, see those. So, I mean, I know particularly the property in Smithfield, you know, is just a vacant shell of a building, so any improvement there would be remarkable. But in any case, you know, like to have a better idea of what the property owner's intentions are and what we're supporting.
Okay, in the future, we will submit those together.
Thank you.
Councilor Clark?
I would be interested in just knowing more about the program, what the criteria is for qualifying, if there are specific target areas that you all are, you know, are you working on specific corridors, or, you know, focus areas to create more impact? And then I know when we did it before, it was in commercial revitalization districts, and it was usually a rebate. So this is, this is like, they can draw to make their contractor payments, or is this a?
It's a reimbursement.
It's a reimbursement, okay. Yeah, but I'd just like to know what the strategy is and the eligibility.
Okay.
I mean, not today necessarily, but.
We have a PowerPoint, so we could get that to all of you guys.
Madam President? Because I see the interest in the council for this, if you don't mind, we can probably present this to a committee of the whole, because I think we have interests that ARPA funds may be going to be used for this program. So I think it would be wise if we just brief the entire council on this.
Perfect, and we could put this on a future committee of the whole agenda, so that we could just get more information about the background of this and how you go through that process. So we'll entertain that definitely. Councilor Quinn?
Yeah, just to follow up, as we're, you know, as you all are preparing to make those presentations, I would like to know about the relationship between this program and our pursuing new market tax credits.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Quinn. I'm sorry, Madam President, but yes, these are, because they're forgivable loans, that does fall into the new markets credit, so yes, these actually help our potential going after new markets when it come available. Yes, you're correct.
Thank you. Any other questions, councilors? Thank you all so much. We're ready for the vote. All right, thank you. So items 30, 31, and 34 passed. Next item.
Item 33, a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, corner of our state and local fiscal recovery, recover funds agreement between the city of Birmingham and Greater Birmingham Habitat for Humanity Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $340,000, on which Habitat will revitalize the rising West Princeton neighborhood by constructing eight new single-family affordable housing units and providing roof repair, fortification, and critical home repair for up to 20 qualified low and moderate income residents in Council District Eight.
Item? All right, thank you. Councilor Clark, you asked this, remember?
Yes, Madam President. I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of this initiative through the ARPA funds that we get to direct, and it's been kind of a long time coming. I think we went to the land bank, Habitat went to the land bank to apply for the properties that will be used probably about a year ago, and this initiative is really aimed at trying to stabilize the area around Princeton Elementary, where, you know, the rising West Princeton neighborhood is fairly stable. It's surrounded by commercial corridors like Long Avenue and Third Avenue West that exert some pressure on the neighborhood, but it's a pretty calm and quiet, actually the highest of the low-income areas in my district. But the area around the school, which is one of our best schools, is just very unstable between the school and Rickwood Field, so we're just trying to restore some of that neighborhood fabric and stabilize that area. So really grateful to be able to direct funds in this manner. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions regarding this item? This is an ARPA-funded item that is coming from District Eight, so we're very excited to see this. We're ready for the vote. Thank you, that item passes. Congratulations, District Eight, and Councilor Clark and those residents. Thank you. Next item.
Should be item 41, a resolution opposing House Bill HB 177 and requesting the Alabama House of Representatives and the Alabama Senate vote against the legislation because of its adverse impact to local governance. Madam President, correction to the actual resolution itself, we need to make the adopting date the 25th of April. That's on the last line of the actual resolution.
Okay. All right, councilors, do we have a motion in the second?
Move the item.
Item is before you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Woods is Chair of the Government Affairs and Public Information Committee. We commend you for bringing this resolution forward. Did you give us more information about it?
Yes, ma'am. You know, number one, I think, we've had a lot of conversation offline, really among all of us, about kind of what's going on in Montgomery in particular, HB 177. Do want to thank Madam President for her leadership and just kind of speaking on behalf of the city at the committee meeting in Montgomery, what was, I guess, a couple of weeks ago at this point, but really working. I think at this point, it's just important to kind of speak up on behalf of the council itself. This bill directly takes away two appointments from the council. It also reduces the overall number of appointments made by the city of Birmingham as a whole. That basically dilutes our ability to represent our ratepayers, who, you know, are the largest block of ratepayers here in the city of Birmingham. And so it's important to, you know, I think, just kind of let those representatives just know where we stand. I think as they're making decisions there, I think this is something that is important, you know, for them to know where we are on this issue. And, you know, so I wanted to bring it before you, but I know we've talked in depth about this bill and several others, and I think at this point, it's just a good idea to go ahead and make a statement on behalf of the council in the form of a resolution.
Thank you, councilors. Yes, Councilor Quinn?
Yes, just want to reiterate that we've very much been paying attention to this issue, and as the relationship is sometimes tenuous between Montgomery and Birmingham, we have been very careful, you know, to not, you know, make the situation worse. And so we've been seeking advice directly from state legislators, and so, but I think the time has come for us to take a position officially and put it in writing. So, but I do want the citizens of Birmingham to know that although you may not have heard us vociferously speak on this issue, we have very much been paying attention and been in direct conversation with legislators in Montgomery regarding how we should act. So, just putting that out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Proten?
Thank you, Madam President, and really, thank you, Councilor Quinn, for acknowledging that, because even though my dad's a state senator, I am going to give his praises, right? Because this is the first time they've tried to take the word from us. This is just the first time publicly everybody's knowing about it, because about three years ago, they tried it, and my dad actually stopped it before it even got to any of us. And so what Councilor Quinn is saying, that we have been talking to him and Jabbo and Marika Coleman, like, we've been talking to them, because, let's be honest, politics is a game. Because, like, if you go out there and you're being arrogant and just boasting about it, you honestly could shoot yourself in the foot. And so I do want to thank Councilor Woods for being very patient and diligent. He's been talking to our state senators, our representatives, being like, hey, is this the right time for us to speak up? And so Madam President has done a great job, as always. I think you've been hit with a lot of stuff lately, as our president, honestly. But we're against this, and I think it's totally unfair the way they bully Birmingham, because that's all they're doing, is bullying us. And so I think it is time for us to take a stand, and also to show them, with future councilors in our council, that we are able to appoint competent people to the board, because it's almost like an insult to the city council by trying to take away these appointments and giving it to the governor and the mayor. So, thank you, Councilor Woods, always. And Madam President, thank you for appointing us Chairperson of Government Affairs.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Yes?
Yeah, I want to tread lightly too, but I do want to, you know, just talk about how injurious this bill is beyond our appointments, because I've never seen anyone authorized to appoint and then remove members. So I just think that is, I mean, to be able to appoint somebody and then take them out of the appointment is pretty, that's an overreach, in my opinion, and it's a way to control the way they behave when they get on the board. And then to remove all compensation is not prudent, in my opinion, because this is a publicly appointed board that is really a serious corporate board. I mean, we need this to run as a business, and so we've cured the compensation issue. It is very modest compensation, but you do want people to take it seriously and be motivated to show up, to govern the Waterworks Board, which is a public utility company. So I just, I think this is injurious on so many levels to, I mean, the taking away, I feel like we've already been crippled somewhat by the legislature as a city council, and then to take our appointments away and insult us and say we're not capable of picking competent people, I think, is just, it's going a little far. So that's all I'll say today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, Councilor Tate?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. I mean, thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Councilor Woods, for your leadership when it comes to, you know, policy. You know, when we look around and we see, you know, everything that is unfolding besides water, a lot is under attack, you know, when we look at what is transpiring. So this is an opportunity, you know, to work and stand collectively, as you all have stated, against issues, and especially particularly, as Councilor Clark say, people belittling, you know, those that are not able to make competent decisions. You know, I beg the difference. But again, thank you for your leadership. I'm glad to be standing proudly with you all against this, because we've seen the ridiculous water bills that our ratepayers, hundred thousand dollar bills, and seven thousand dollar bills, and ten thousand dollar bills, and, you know, people's utilities and waters are, you know, being cut off. So again, I'm grateful to be standing proudly with you all on this and against any issues, and sending a message to those in Montgomery that, you know, we are competent to make decisions when it comes to governing and policy.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Abbott?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank Councilor Woods for taking, for being our point man, literally the point man, because in the past, I think I've probably been one of those people who made comments that irritated people in the legislature, so I have to be careful. But, you know, the fact that the billing issues are being blamed on the board, you know, I'm just not really sure how the board would have controlled the problems with the billing issues, which I'll admit, I don't really understand how they got into all that trouble with billing, but I don't think you can blame it on the board. And to put a bill in the legislature to take away our ability to appoint people when the Waterworks, although it is no longer ours because we sold it, it is the Birmingham Waterworks, and we started it. You know, we may not own it anymore, but it just bothers me that every time we try to do something that is looking forward, we seem to get smacked down, and I'm tired of being smacked down, but what I'm tired of doesn't matter in the grand scheme of life. So I, the only thing about this bill that I agree with is I think that there is some wisdom in requiring that at least a couple of the members have a professional background in something that actually affects the Water Works, the operation. You know, having someone who is an expert in finance is a very wise thing, and having someone who's an engineer would be a wise thing. But that was the only thing I could find in the bill that I agreed with. So I had to look for a bright point. That was the only one. Thank you.
Councilor Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to just follow up to Councilor Abbott's, you know, support of the qualifications, and I agree too, but I do feel like someone with environmental conservation experience would be important for our water system, because so much of our water assets and water filtration happens naturally and, you know, through the environmental buffer that we have in all of the property south of the Cohaba that's in our jurisdiction, that really, its purpose is for conservation. And, you know, I think that some of that culture of environmental stewardship has been diluted over time, and having, but, but I guess the main point is that those qualifications could be instituted at the local level, and we don't need the state to dictate those. We could adopt those at the local level. And so I kind of, I hope that we will. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you all. I am grateful to my colleagues on the council. I'm grateful for the leadership that Councilor Woods has shown us through the Government Affairs Committee. I'm appreciative of the patience and the diligence and the work that's been done by this council, as we've gone out and had to consider what this legislation would do to us. I don't think, it goes without saying, the legislation, either as it was first presented or as the subbill presents, it directly diminishes the power of the Birmingham City Council and its authority to appoint board members to represent the ratepayers of the city of Birmingham. As has already been said, it may long, the assets may no longer be, belong to us, but this is the Birmingham Waterworks, which has the majority of ratepayers that have to pay for that water, as well as utilize that water. So by working with the board to ensure that we have the proper guidance, that will only help to enhance the quality of the water that is provided to us. Also, I want to thank those members of the legislative body who have worked with us and have helped to guide us as we've gone through this process. And so I just want to say to the residents, we have not been sitting idly by. We have been working, and we, I want to thank those members of the public who have gone out and want to bring this information to our residents. One of the things we said initially was that we wanted to ensure that our residents knew about this, so we thank you for any public meetings that you may have had, for our residents to have more information about what is before us. Keep in mind, this was presented as a general bill, even though it affects the city of Birmingham. We've seen that done to us before, councilors, and our authority here as council members. So let's stay in tune with the work that's being done. Is this the first? Will this continue? So I just, again, want to thank my colleagues, as we consider this resolution and go on record, we want to continue with our appointing power as it is currently. And again, we're all considering how we can help to uphold those standards by looking at any other qualifications that might be necessary to help improve that board membership. Thank you all very much. At this time, councilors, we're ready for the vote.
That vote should be up.
All right, thank you. That resolution passes. Thank you very much. Next item.
Should be item 70, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for the city to make application receiving a spin grant funding from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, Office of Air and Radiation Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, in the amount of $1 million to develop and implement plan for reducing greenhouse gas emissions and other harmful air pollution for a period of up to. gas emissions and other harmful air pollution for a period of up to 48 months, with no matching funds due from the city.
Move the item to second. Right, thank you, councilors. This was, this is an item, um, resolution that's authorizing the mayor to execute documents where we could go for, um, expend grant funding from the EPA. Chiefs, if you all would give us, I know this was presented to us during budget and financials today, but we'd really like for the public to know what this grant may or may not do for us, some of the issues we've had in the past.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, Ms. Amelia Muller is here from the mayor's office and she'll provide that information.
Good morning, Amelia Muller. I serve as Civic Design Principal in the mayor's office. So the grant before you today is the climate pollution, all the statistical areas in the country are eligible for a $1 million planning grant to support planning activities that can then drive implementation of climate pollution reduction activities. We have been in close contact with neighboring municipalities and with the Regional Planning Commission and the city of Birmingham will be leading this planning effort in close collaboration with the Regional Planning Commission to cover not only the city of Birmingham's, um, you know, limits and, and agenda in climate pollution reduction, but also to make sure that, um, the activities are inclusive of the region. The, this grant includes a requirement to submit first a preliminary climate, uh, action plan in early 2024 and then follow that two years later by, um, a, a sort of more robust climate pollution reduction plan. And eligible activities under this grant are inclusive of staffing and contractual costs, planning and implementation meetings, workshops, convenings, outreach and education for stakeholders, modeling and analytical costs, studies, assessments, data collection, et cetera. So in essence, this provides, um, supportive funding for, um, deeper climate planning work, um, that seeks to advance our agenda beyond what is currently in the comprehensive plan and the framework plans into essentially the, the next, um, next cut of activities in climate pollution reduction.
Uh, Councilor Moore?
Thank you, uh, Madam Protem. Uh, so question, have, if we receive this, uh, let me see, this grant, have there already been areas that have been identified that you all would like to utilize this in or is this an opportunity for us to identify those now?
So it would be, um, so the, the plan and, and activities that this grant supports is regional in focus, um, and certainly inclusive of city of Birmingham. Um, it, it will certainly, the, the planning activities will certainly surface focus areas, priority projects, et cetera, which we could then apply for implementation dollars for. So this is specifically, um, planning dollars. It wouldn't support, um, direct implementation activities for implementing any projects or programs, but it could help us essentially identify a slate of shovel-ready projects to then go after, um, implementation dollars for.
Yes, Councilor Clark?
So, um, thank you, Madam President and Ms. Muller. Is the, is the region the whole seven county metro area or would it be just adding some strategic areas outside of Birmingham that may not be the whole seven counties?
So under the EPA's designation, it is inclusive of the entire MSA, all seven counties, which is, is partly why we're partnering closely with Regional Planning Commission in this. Um, and that's sort of borne out in the, um, eligible entities documentation from EPA. So, um, as, as we have started to think about the activities, you know, the, this supports public engagement, it supports engagement among neighboring municipalities, et cetera. So, um, you know, we believe that the activities that this will support will help to surface some of those priority areas within the MSA, but it is in fact covering the entire MSA according to the EPA.
And I guess one of my other, my only other question is, can you give us an example? I'm sure you've probably imagined some outcome, like could this lead to the city of Birmingham having a sustainability plan or something like that? Or, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what, what might be on the other end of this, for example?
Absolutely. So quite tactic, quite tactically, this does require us to create a climate action plan. So in essence, it, um, it provides the supporting dollars for the type of planning work that we want to be undertaking already, um, to, to craft a resilience and sustainability plan and then to identify priority projects from that that we can go after. So that is one outcome. Um, and, you know, any manner of activities and priorities might be cited in those plans. I don't want to sort of preempt, um, necessarily what would emerge from that, but, um, you know, I think we can all imagine some of the ways that, that those conversations might go.
Any other questions, councilors? Thank you, Ms. Muller. We're ready for the vote. All right, thank you. Item 70 passes. Thank you very much. Councilors, what's been presented before you is an item of where we need to amend that there was an oversight with the Alabama League of Municipalities. They will be holding an annual convention, May 10th through the 13th, and we do have delegates, we do have one delegate and an alternate. And so what is before you is that I'll have to ask for unanimous consent so that we can, um, help post this resolution to announce our delegate and, what do you call it when somebody's not there? Alternate. Thank you so much. Delegate and alternate for that meeting.
Motion for unanimous consent to accept the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, promote the item as it.
Move that item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, councilors. At this time, councilors, um, we will give you an opportunity to give updates from each of your districts and we can start with Councilor Woods. Are you ready? You're always ready.
I always start talking. I don't know if I'm always ready, but, uh, no, I just want to thank everybody who came out, uh, last weekend and participated in the gardening, D1 Garden Day. Uh, that has turned into a pretty unique group of folks that, that kind of have, uh, I guess, taken ownership of the garden at this point and every now and then they let me make a suggestion, but, um, just kind of cool to see those things kind of come together and, and function the way we, uh, dreamed it up. So just excited about that and, uh, yeah, so I'm gonna kick it on around.
Councilor Tate?
Yes, ma'am.
And Councilor Tate, before you start at this time, we do want to offer our condolences to you and the loss of your niece, Jemaya, and, um, just really, really know that our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family and, um, the, just the loss of your family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. Dolomite will be having their neighborhood cleanup on this Saturday, May the 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. The meetup is 7:30 a.m. at the Dolomite Westfield Community Center located at 1056 10 Mile Road, that's Birmingham 35061. Dolomite Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight, April the 25th, and that's conference call. You can call in 720-843-2669, code 3789426. Fountain Heights Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at the Fountain Heights Recreation Center and it's located at 1101 15th Avenue North and the zip code is 35203. In and Ridge will meet on Thursday, April the 27th. They also meet by conference call at 5:30 and the call-in number is 312-626-6799. The code is 068-464. Um, we will be gearing up for District 9 Derby Day, which is May the 6th, and it's going to be from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. at CityWalk and we will, um, welcoming all constituents in District 9. We will have national recording artist Glenn Jones will be there providing some of his great hits and also the party rockers, uh, Carla Youngblood will be the host as well and events, um, Rose Events, Ms. Janet Maycock is the event planner, uh, for this event. So we are, you know, inviting all District 9 constituents out throughout the district and, um, it's open to everyone and it is a free event. So the next public safety meeting was scheduled for May the 9th, but unfortunately, Madam President, I will not be available. I will be representing the city of Birmingham in the Safe Summer Conference with the Urban League with Mark Merrill and, uh, Karen Mason, who is the president of John J. College. So I would be a panel guest, um, and want to thank the Aspen Institute, Dr. Douglas Woods for inviting me there. So you can send your items over, um, no later than Wednesday, May the 3rd, by 12:00 noon and you can submit them to Patrice Collins at patrice.collins@birminghamal.gov. So we'll have the next public safety meeting. It will be on the 23rd. That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you very much and congratulations again. I don't know if we congratulated you, um, on your selection to be on, tell us again, the Aspen?
I was selected to be, well, selected and voted on the Aspen's Institute, um, Criminal Justice Advisory Board to represent the city of Birmingham. So I'm super excited about that because we're doing, you know, some partnership in with the Aspen Institute to, uh, bring the justice and governance and data audit into the city that will drive down into the neighborhood so we can really see where we need to be making, you know, these investments. So it's a lot of moving parts that are going on. Uh, I call it community safety because I always say you cannot have public safety or develop a plan without the public. It's not, it's no way that you could do that. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you and we appreciate your representation and the selection for that. Thank you very much. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, first want to commend, uh, Walladine Streeter and the Bush Hills neighbors who came out Earth Day strong this past Saturday to keep Birmingham beautiful. They partnered with the Village Creek Society and UAB Live Health Smart and we were joined by volunteers from Birmingham Southern College and the municipal court and really got a lot done, so, uh, really proud of that effort. And, um, also the Bush Hills neighborhood will meet today via Zoom at 6:30 p.m. If you'd like to connect, you can go to www.bushhills.org to register for the meeting, actually just to link to the meeting. We're adding a little razzle-dazzle to this Thursday's walk, uh, our Every Thursday Walk that starts at the Crossplex. Uh, this week we'll be joined by Yula Jackson from Trustmark Mortgage and she'll join us to give neighbors, uh, who walk regularly, um, or some who show up for the first time, a preview of a workshop that they're going to be presenting with us this coming Saturday called Create Your Financial Well-Being. Uh, we, we meet up every Thursday at about five minutes till 8:00 a.m. at the Starbucks at the Crossplex to do a, a maybe one and a quarter to one and a half mile loop, depending on the path we select. But all paces are welcome and we get a lot of catching up done as we walk around on Thursdays. So this Saturday, uh, please join us, whether you walk with us Thursday or not, for creating your financial well-being. It's a workshop that's offered, uh, in honor of Financial Education Month. Uh, it's going to be presented by Operation Hope, Trustmark Mortgage and my office. And the workshop will give you tools to chart a course toward financial well-being. It starts at 10:00 a.m. and goes to about noon at the Trustmark Mortgage Off, Office that's located at, in the Crossplex, right next to the Crab Barracks, if you're wondering where it is. Uh, seating is limited, so it's, um, necessary to register. You can go to www.d8events eventbrite.com. That's W-W-W dot D, the number eight, events dot eventbrite.com. Also, uh, time is running out if you want to be a lifeguard and help us, uh, close the pool access gap. Um, even though there's been a tremendous effort over the last several months, um, very few people are making it to become certified. Either it's the, you know, we've either got swimmers who don't meet the lifeguard certification training requirements or there is a drug screening that impacts, uh, some people's eligibility. And there is a physical fitness requirement, you know, you gotta be able to save somebody, not just, you know, do great laps across the pool. So, uh, despite all the long-term efforts and, and then the, the training that we're doing with the YMCA, you know, it doesn't, even though we're participating and recruiting people to go through that training, they get to select where they go. I do feel like, um, I've asked if our rates, if our pay, if our wages are competitive and I think that they are, but anyway, we need at least four certified lifeguards per pool to open them. Uh, we could open up to eight pools this summer, but it may be back at three or so if we don't get more lifeguards. So you have until May 12th to apply and, and they will provide the training and certification if you're not already certified. The minimum age is 16 years, but there is no maximum age. And, um, you can contact the park board, uh, Ms. Terry Sewell Harris at 205-254-2189 for more information. And then, um, for a limited time remaining, residents who are at least 65 years of age and have been, uh, in ownership of their home for at least five years have until April 30th to claim a homestead exemption that will freeze your property taxes at the current rate, uh, for this next, uh, property tax cycle. So you can contact the Jefferson County Tax Assessor's Office at 205-325-5505 for more information on this, uh, new special exemption for senior homeowners 65 years and older. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, we have a couple of neighborhood association meetings that will take place this week. We have the Norwood Neighborhood Association that will take place on Wednesday at 6:00 p.m., uh, via Zoom. Harriman Park will also have their neighborhood association this Thursday at 4:30 p.m., uh, at the Harriman Park Rec Center. Uh, on Monday, we have four neighborhood associations taking place, Brooman Heights, Maple Grove, Collegeville and Zion City, uh, all of which will start at 6:00 p.m. Uh, to find more information on how to join those meetings, please go to Birmingham City Council, um, website and go to the District 4 page where all of that information will be listed. Um, this past weekend, we had a cleanup over in the Northeast Lake neighborhood, um, was very well attended, um, was very excited about it. Uh, we had, uh, Banks Academy Football Team to come out, some representatives from, uh, the East Lake Cowboys Little League Team to come out, uh, as well as 46th Street Baptist Church, um, that really showed out. Uh, they, they came out in large numbers and so, um, had an opportunity to, you know, not just clean up trash, but actually, you know, connect with different residents in the neighborhood, um, knocking on doors, inviting them to neighborhood association meetings. And so, um, it was a really good time and it was really a good day. Uh, the weather was beautiful, so, um, great day to have an Earth Day. Speaking of Earth Day, um, I wanted to, uh, get some assistance, uh, from, from our joint chiefs, if, if you will. Uh, I know there's a location over in, um, the Engle Nook or in between Engle Nook and Collegeville, um, 2252 Vanderbilt Road. Uh, it's an area where a gentleman has several different boats that are just sitting on the corner. Um, you pretty much, you know, see it when you get off the Tallaposa exit, uh, it's right down Vanderbilt Road, just trying to find out if, if there's a business license that the gentleman has or if anything could be done to, you know, um, put some type of enforcement, um, when the cover of the space up or not.
Madam President?
Yes, Chief.
Can you give the address again, Councilor?
So it's 2252 Vanderbilt Road, 35217.
Okay, we got you.
Okay. Um, last two things, uh, got a chance to go to the Cedar Events. Um, yeah, congratulations to, I want to say, is it Team Smiling? No, congratulations. Um, yeah, Council, I, I think we need us a team, you know, we, we need to get involved next time, you know, because I saw some tug-of-war, uh, activities going on and I thought that, you know, we, we could do something with, yeah, you know, I don't know, if the strongest member of our team is Valerie Abbott out there and, you know, we can, we can make this thing work.
Yeah, right.
Uh, but I did want to just, you know, acknowledge, you know, that event, uh, because I could tell that a lot of our city workers and city employees truly that a lot of our city workers and city employees truly enjoyed it. And, you know, it's a great morale boost, you know, to everybody, so I commend you all for that. Lastly, I just want to acknowledge, you know, my Neighborhood Association President from Engle Nook, Reverend Gwendolyn Webb in the crowd, as well as my resident, Mr. Harry Giddens out there as well. So that concludes my announcements.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. The planning and zoning meeting for Wednesday, April 26th at 3:30 PM is canceled. I know that the members of the committee will be very sad about that. Neighborhood Association meeting, we have Monday, May 1st, is the Glen Iris Neighborhood Association meeting, and it meets at 6:30 PM. If you have any concerns or issues, we are encouraging people to either call 311, or better yet, download the MyBeHem 311 app. I was at the Redmont neighborhood last night, and they said that they have been reporting a lot of things, but so far, none of them have been addressed. So I want to talk to the staff and say y'all need to step it up, because I don't want to be encouraging people to use these apps and then have them feel like they don't work. So two of the things last night were manhole covers that are way below the level of the paving, like either they're not milling down far enough, or the utility companies aren't raising their manhole covers. I don't know which, I don't know whose problem it is, but they're calling them potholes. And I said, well, they're potholes with metal bottoms, so that's a good thing. But we do need to, when we do this paving, make sure that the paving contractors, number one, don't raise the street up to meet the top of the curb, and that they also don't leave the manhole, I mean, not mill enough so that the manholes become a pothole. So is that something that y'all can look into? Because it's a real big complaint.
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. So the actual location, if you could, just please restate that, Counselor Abbott, and we'll make sure our GA team has it. But to the point, our Capital Projects Department normally comes behind once we receive notice to make sure that there's compliance with what the contractor is doing. So if there's something that you all noticed, again, please share with us, and we'll make sure the team follows up. Oftentimes, when they're, when it's in transition mode, meaning they haven't, our team hasn't gone out to enforce them coming back, that's when you all are seeing it. Because oftentimes, when you look it back up, our team is saying, we're going to be following back up with them on it. But when you see it, just let us know, and we'll make sure there's follow-up when they haven't complied.
Okay, so do we have the power to ask the utility companies to raise their manholes up?
I'll need to look into it, I don't understand.
If they've already paved the street, they're not going to go and rip the street out because they have a manhole, you know, that's now three inches below, and somebody at the city told them, well, they could just round the edges, and that would make it okay. And they said, no, rounding the edges is not going to make it any less of a bump when you hit it. So I'll get the neighborhood folks to make a list of the locations, but it's all over the city. I mean, if you drive a car, you fall in those things all the time. And the milling, to me, the milling is the point where you would catch that kind of thing because you would mill sufficiently below the top of the manhole so that when you paved, the manhole was even with the pavement. But I will ask the folks in Redmont to, you know, make a list. And the other question at that meeting last night was, Woodcrest Road has been closed since March 9th because, well, the road is settling on a very steep slope. The question last night was, could that road just be permanently closed?
Who'll provide you a follow-up on that, Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, because they feel like maybe that road is used primarily by people from the suburbs who want to cut through a neighborhood instead of going down the interstate or the Elton B Stevens, and they don't particularly appreciate that. So it was just a question. I'm sure everyone in the neighborhood would not be in agreement. So don't take that as a request, but just could it be that we could just close that road permanently instead of spending millions of dollars trying to fix the fact that it's in a slide zone?
Do you have a cross-street or anything?
It's the part that's closed.
Okay.
I mean, the city closed it on March 9th. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at 6:00 PM at Fountain Heights Recreation Center. Crestwood North Neighborhood Association will also meet tonight at 6:30 PM at Girls Inc. And next week, the city of Birmingham will host several workshops and events for Small Business Week. That's April 30th through May 6th. Registration is free and available at www.bhmup.com. Again, that's Small Business Week, April 30th through May 6th. Free registration for various workshops and events at bhup.com. And finally, this will be the last time that I make this announcement. The Birmingham Parking Authority has one board position that is currently vacant. If you are interested in serving in that capacity and would like to be considered for that appointment, you must be a Birmingham resident to be eligible to apply. If so, please email your resume and letter of interest to maisha.hutchinson@maisha.hutchinson@birminghamal.gov or to myself by Monday, May 1st. And that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Madam Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam President. The Woodland Park Neighborhood Association will meet today virtually at 6:00 PM. The call-in number is 727-731-3972. The next PIC meeting will meet on May 2nd at 2:00 PM. It will actually be in Conference Rooms D and E because we're moving as they're doing renovations. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Submissions received afternoon will be placed on the next PIC agenda. The District 6 office will host a health fair on Thursday, May 4th from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at the West End Library. Also, New Hope Baptist Church will host Women to Women Fellowship Ministry vendor fair this Sunday, April 30th from noon to 4:00, located at 174 Clayburn Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama, 35211. Kahaba Medical is having their Health Mobile Clinic. That will be at Living Ministries every Wednesday between 2:00 and 4:00 PM. Also, we also had a great cleanup for Earth Day this past Saturday. We had a lot of volunteers, a lot of youth volunteers from the Phillips cheerleading team. We had some teenagers, some Sixth Avenue Baptist Church that our school board member, Ms. Watkins, brought. We had buildup, we had some residents there. We had our Neighborhood Officer Jason and Charles from South Tissville, Ms. Scott from Woodland Park, and then Mr. Moore from North Tissville. And it was very, it was very cool. I think the youngest child we had was two years old. He tried his little picker. He tried the best he could, y'all, but it was really good. It was really cool because we saw a resident walking by. He actually joined in and started picking up trash. So I think Saturday was a good day for all of us. I was really proud to see majority of the districts picking up trash, having a party. I'm sorry, I couldn't make the party for Madam President, but I also would like to yield the rest of my time to some of the members of the public that would like to talk to us about the Water Works Board, if that's fine, Madam President.
That's fine. Maybe that's okay with Counselors. I believe we had.
All of it areas, Hilliard. Are you a spokesperson, Mr. Hilliard? All right, all y'all can come up. We're not going to rush you, but we're going to.
Thank you, Madam Counselor. To the mayor in his absence, Chief Sparks, Chief Mitchell, President of the Council and Counsel, good morning.
Good morning.
Standing before you today, we were talking about this Water Works bill, and I want to start off by saying to Counselor Quinn, thank you for those words. Words have meaning, and they mean a lot. Our meeting that we had on yesterday, a few of our members were concerned because publicly we had not heard from the council on this issue. And I am one to believe that these counselors that we have, these strong leaders that we have sitting before us, are not ones to just allow someone to take power or assume power that they have and have control of in our city. We elected you to make those decisions, and we expect you to continue to make those decisions. Outside of the point of the power in that bill, the neglect of the community is seen in that bill. I agree, there should be someone from the Finance Committee or with a financial background that sits on that committee. But there also should be a member of the community, someone who is vested in the community, someone who is of the community that makes up the city of Birmingham, should have a spot on that committee. We, as citizens of Birmingham, elected you, and I'm glad you walked in, Counselor Woods. Thank you. You did come last night to our meeting, and you assured us that business was going to be handled and that the council was going to take a stand, and we want to thank you for that. But we just want to encourage you to continue to be steadfast, continue to stay on our legislators as we're going to stay on both you and the legislature. But I'll yield the rest of my time for more members of the community to speak. Mr. Umar Umarani?
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Walter Umarani. I'm the president and owner of Crescent Court Community Center and a proud member of the committee to save Jefferson County. I want to save, and I'm going to be as quickly as possible, and many people appreciate what Brother Hilliard said, and you're going to hear much more after me, but I want to create a picture. I really love those who accept leadership positions in these inner cities. I really love and respect you. And the people, the everyday working people trying to etch a life here in this society, I love them even more. That's why I'm here. I'm a retired supervisor for Chevron Additives Division. I helped to install petroleum process equipment, maintenance, modify the equipment. And engineers have this way of looking at things. They measure everything, and they study trends because trends help you to predict what's going to happen for your preventive failures. There is a trend in the southern states, and if we don't pay attention to it, it's going to bite us if we're not doing it already. Professor Dominique Morell, the New York State University, he said it plainly, there's a move to take over, that's the word he says, of municipalities and systems and their fiscal financial policies of established governments that's already in place. In Texas, the governor's moved to take over the education system. In Houston, the whole system. So let Mr. Sullivan know we might be next. In Georgia, they've already passed an ordinance to override the prosecutorial decisions and discretionary decisions of the DA. In Mississippi, we all knew about that. They've taken over the whole municipality. The state police will do the policing in the city, Mr. Sparks, so we may be next. Taken over the whole municipality, and it's not by mistakes. And in each one of these states that I mentioned, it's a different segment of the government. You know, it's too obvious if they do them all the same, all the school systems, all the boards, all of the municipalities. And here, it's our life-giving water supply. I have no interest in the qualifications of the board, these board members we're talking about. I'm for complete ownership until we own it, and with all that comes with it. Until the local municipality own your life-giving water source, these issues from the dominated Republican legislature in Montgomery, it's going to always come back up. It's going to always come back up unless you own your system. And that's all I have to say, other than, Ms. Clark, one of the leading causes of death of young black boys is drowning. Do whatever you have to do to get those pools open, ma'am, please. Please, I'm here to help. Love you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's still morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam President, Madam President Pro Tem, and to my councilmen and all of you, we want to say thank you this morning. And Counselor Woods, thank you. We want to say thank you this morning for what you've stepped out, and that's what we were talking about. We know the strength that we have here. We know what we've got, and we know each and every one of you. So, you know, during my prayer time last night and this morning, I said, well, the children did it once before, and we're bringing the children back out to do it again. But working in conjunction with all of you, we need to keep our water. When people have been buying water, Birmingham water, why? Because it's good water. And we don't want people to feel like they're in control of us. We're in, we are in control of our own water and our own livelihood. So we're going to wait not long, like Dr. King said. How long? Not long. And so we're here to work in conjunction with you. Anything that you want us to do, all you got to do, Madam President, Madam President Pro Tem, and all of you, is dial us up and tell us what you want. So since now I'm pastoring, once again, so I'm going to be calling on you to come and help me too. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless you, Counselor Woods, for what you do and what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Karen Amin. I'm a citizen of the city of Birmingham. Good morning, I'm Karen Amin. I'm a citizen of the city of Birmingham, and I am in agreement, and I appreciate all of the hard work that you all have done to maintain some control and some input into what happens at the Birmingham Water Works Board. I appreciate everything that has been done to block the attempt to override that authority, and thank you for that. I do have some concerns, though. My concern is, and you may have heard this, is I don't understand how there is no transparency to understand how so much has happened to those who have lesser voice in terms of their bills. And I'll give one example. I accompanied someone very close to me who was getting $1,000 bills consistently when she's the only one in the property, okay? And then there was no relief given to her. They said, you have to get someone to go in and find where the property is leaking on an almost acre lot. And, you know, and then when you contact the companies, they don't have a clear way of doing that. So what I'm saying, I think, is that when you go down and an average person speaks to the hard-working people at the front counter, you cannot, they cannot refer you to a supervisor. You can't speak to anyone but them, and it's very limited access and information you have towards solving, a problem solving. They'll show you what your bill is, what they have presented you, but no solutions, no options, no outcomes, and that's not transparency, and it doesn't speak well for the board, and it doesn't speak well for overseeing the board. And I think a better job can be done for that because I think it's a disadvantage to those with lesser voice. And the 86-year-old man that they told, if he doesn't pay that $1,200 bill, they're going to cut his water off. He didn't, you know, he didn't produce $1,200 bill in one month. And so I don't understand how they are free to do that, and I think there needs to be transparency. I think that we need to have control of the city again, and I don't understand why more has not been done to prevent that. It's been a year, almost, that I'm aware of, since this was going on. But again, thank you all, and please look out for the small person as well, for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Richard Franklin.
My name is Richard Franklin. First, it's just an honor to be before you. We thank you. First, we thank Councilor Woods. You remember the conversation we had last night? It was a very heated conversation. People sometimes take passion as they don't like a person or they disagree. That's not what it's about. Councilor Quinn, I ran against you. I'm here to support you. We're here to support all of you because we are Birmingham. In 1962, they did a documentary, CBS, Who Speaks for Birmingham? I've been telling everybody, when it comes to this waterworks and our utilities around this country, you see people that used to live in the urban areas. There in other areas and they're passing bills. And in our situation, the thing that I want people to think about, I'm not going to always say it's about race, but it's always questions, what's the intent of a man's heart? Not my place to judge him, but I'm going to call a name because it's history and it's factual. Jabbo Wagner Senior was one of the people, one of the first people from Birmingham on the Water Works Board in 1951. All the things that we're seeing in bills were set up in 1951, most of it. The pay that the employees and the board members get is state law. But the reason we're here today is we have to support you. This is our story. What type of moment will we have? I'm proud of you, what you did today, but I'm telling you, I go to Montgomery, you're going to have to go further. You have Pro Tem, Smithman sitting here, her father serves, they have a supermajority. Last night, they told Representative Rogers every day, the House Speaker is saying, make a deal. Make a deal. And the education round, we seen them run the Accountability Act through just because they could. So Birmingham is, who speaks for us? We're going to stand with you. Speak, speak loudly because you're our council. If they take this bill passes, just having two votes, that's not sufficient for us because we spent twenty million dollars, the city of Birmingham, when they did the bun in 1951, to purchase the waterworks. And they knew it was going to grow. And if you look at the bills, the way they're written, the thing I want you to remember was so disrespectful with the legislators that brought this, is that if it's not about race, they're in the region, in our county, that brought this bill. They've never come and addressed this council. They've never addressed the Water Works Board, but they passed a bill in Montgomery. That's total disrespect. So it's our job to stand with you. And when we, when you hear us speak, we're not at you, we're with you. And the people that live in the city need to understand what's going on. It's starting with the water today. The next would be the airport. Pay attention to what's going on in Atlanta and Jackson, Mississippi. Pay attention, there is a bill to take over the government. I wish our mayor was here to understand the way language in this bill is written. They say the mayor will be, will have appointing authority, but if you read the bill in Jackson, Mississippi, when they take the authority from you and the governor appoints somebody, the person that's the mayor, they take over and they have to say so. So they will have total takeover. So, we may disagree on certain things, but we are Birmingham. So, we want you to know, don't ever feel like you alone. All you have to do is call on us. We are here and it's time to take a stand and this stand today is just the waterworks. They're not going to stop. It may not be this year, but it's coming. And we have to support you and we have to stand together. I don't care if it's twenty of us, you are our elected officials. We elected you. We didn't elect them. We elected you. And I want you to really understand, I understand they have you in meetings about regional stuff, but this Birmingham, this affects Birmingham. Read the bill, the bills that are down there, they have a gang bill. Pay attention to it. It's going to affect Birmingham heavy. It's going to take power from the DA, it's going to take power from the mayor, everything that's going on. So, you are not alone. We're not alone, but together as Birmingham, we are one. I love you and we love you.
We love you.
And we don't ever want you to feel like you alone. We were told last night, we all in agreeance. And the thing I said, if we all in agreeance, let's let them know. Let's not be silently in agreeance because the group that's on the other side, we know who they are. Let's let them know that we are Birmingham together. We elected you and we, the citizens of Birmingham, love you, support you, and let's fight together.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. At this time, we did have some other speakers that were lined up to speak about the waterworks. And Mr. Clerk, if you'll call those names and then we'll continue forward, but we could go ahead and get all the speakers that were here for the waterworks.
Frank Matthews.
Good morning.
That's another mayor, distinguished counsel, Frank James Matthews III. Have you heard? I wasn't going to be parley to this proceeding as it relates to resolutions because I got a closet full of them, my thirty-three years of dealing in Birmingham, a resolution there and a resolution there. And like Vice President Johnson once said, being vice president is like a bucket of spit. And sometimes, simple resolutions is just that, meaningless. But I'm appreciative of what I've seen from the council, particularly as it related to Birmingham Southern. I appreciate that same councilman over there, Mr. Woods, and of course, the distinguished Pro Tem, Ms. Smithman. But what needs to happen with our resolution, and I wasn't going to come and even get involved, until that distinguished fighter of ours, Mr. Belafonte, who was a champion, who was a diplomat. He was opulent, he was all those words that I wouldn't dare pronounce, but he was a fighter for his people. So, the resolution is good, but what I'm advocating and looking for is mass protest and legalization. Judas Prudence. Okay, quick story and I'll be thorough. When William Bell illegally signed a veto that was, overrode a veto, and you don't do that in this council. But William Bell did it after he lost to Bernard Kincaid in the mayor's race, okay? And after Kincaid vetoed the council trying to sell the water, it left another alternative for legislation. You got what happened? Attorney General Bill Pryor at the time, he made himself, he made himself the person that would represent the Birmingham City Council. It's right here. Let me just read it right quick. What he did, two more minutes. Let me read it. It said, July 2000, over Kincaid's veto, in an attempt to scuttle sale, Kincaid filed a lawsuit claiming that the waterworks debt had been assumed by the city, that the independent board no longer met the legal requirements to continue. The Attorney General of Alabama, Bill Pryor, acted as a defendant in the suit on the basis of representing a public. How can Attorney General of the state of Alabama be complicit with a mayor that was interim, who became the president of the council? And after the mayor had vetoed power, six votes other council, all rolled, this Attorney General all rolled veto. And that's how the waterworks ended up being sold. So, what we need to revisit, as I said, we need mass protest and honor Herr Belafonte and we need to use the Judas Prudence that we have. We have a lot of black judges over there. So, now, we keep putting them in office when I need you, I need to stand. You got some great accolades from these individuals today. You know, y'all shut it down, we can't really get at you like we used to, okay? But you got accolades and solidations today for your resolution. I need to resurrect, not revolution. We need results, not reactions. We need water control. We don't need a court. We don't need to change our bills because one might be a thousand two times. We need you to litigate. Y'all take money, five millions to bail out the World Games, you want to give Birmingham Southern some money? We need to put up millions in litigation and go back and fight this in Supreme Court because Attorney General can't do that. Know the law. I want to appreciate y'all for the resolution, but I want y'all to read, research to it hurt so you know what you're talking about. You name your father, don't be running around here legitimate, don't know who your daddy and mama are. If you're going to be councilors, know the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Lee Henry Brown was the, someone else signed up to speak to the waterworks. Henry Brown still here? Brown Jr.? Okay, thank you. At this time, councilors, if you'll allow me to give my District Seven report. He's already spoken. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, these are the District Seven reports. I want to congratulate the Winona Dragons. These are the young Winona Dragons. They are the eight U Silver Major Champions in the USSSA Alabama Youth Baseball League. They won the mid-season tournament for Region Three. And so, we're very excited for the work they're doing and we congratulate them and wish them the best on the rest of the season. We do have Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup scheduled today, scheduled for East Brownsville and Grisella Heights. The Administration Committee will meet at 2:00 PM today, councilors. So for those committee members, don't forget to join me for that meeting. The Bulk Trash Pickup for tomorrow is in Roosevelt City. Chiefs, if I could get the Government Affairs team, there is a huge amount of dumping that's at 5400 Oakwood Street. This is right near the old AG Gaston School. That street is actually no longer being used other than for dumping. So, if we could just be sure that the Bulk Trash Pickup, if they would concentrate in that area tomorrow when they're out in Roosevelt City, it would be most appreciated by the residents.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Also, we have Bulk Trash Pickup for Jermania Park South on Thursday. We have the Industrial Center Neighborhood Association, they'll meet at the Mirador Center on Thursday, April 27th at 6:00 PM. And then we have Bulk Trash Pickup scheduled for Friday, April 28th in Powderly. Do want to remind anyone who's interested in receiving basic parliamentary procedures, training in that, that'll be held by the Grace Browning Unit on April 29th at Lawson State Community College. And that starts at 8:30 AM at Lawson State. The Powderly Neighborhood will meet at the Henry Crompton Rec Center on Monday, May 1st. I do want to thank everyone who is involved in making Love D7 Day such an overwhelming success. I can't tell you the pride we had and the number of volunteers that we had to come out. I'm very excited. We had over fifty students from Green Acres Middle School who wanted to participate and they came out and helped us. And I also want to thank the empowered citizens of Birmingham and members of the Alpha Cap Alpha Sorority Omicron Omega Chapter and just the numerous residents that we had to come out and help us. We hit various areas within District Seven and again, I'm grateful. We did come back and we had a little fun later, so we want to thank everyone. DJ Chris Coleman, we had some treats for everyone and we had a bouncy house. So, I'm just excited. I am also thankful to all the work that was done throughout this city in commemoration of Earth Day. So thank you, councilors, who all partnered to do your love for the environment, not only in D7, but across the city of Birmingham. That concludes my announcements. And Mr. Clerk, now, if we'll continue with the speakers list. Thank you.
Robert Walker. Council, Mayor's Office staff. My name is Robert Walker. I reside at 312 68 Place North in Wahoma Neighborhood. And my concern today is last week, there was a young lady in the Eastlake area who was found dead in her car. She was found dead in the 8400 block of Fifth Avenue North. The police and the news media told everyone that she had been in there a day by October, the young lady who reported the car being there, the lady had been there since Thursday, that's six days, she was sitting, sitting in the car dead. Nobody, just sitting there. She was thirty-one years old, named Aria Jones, thirty-one-year-old lady. I just don't think that that's, that's the way that we want our city to be looked upon. That definitely not the way we want our neighborhood looked upon. And we, I'd like to ask the City Council and the Mayor's Office to come together with our community to do something about this. And the one thing that we can do about this is to close those abandoned streets off. There's no way that we can stop this other than to, to close off those streets. Now, when, when we look at Ms. Jones' death last Thursday, it's not the only one that we had. There've been many more. I'd like to remind you that five years ago, I came here before the City Council and talked to the mayor, talked to the police chief, then Chief Smith, about another young lady that was killed over there. Forgive me if I'm pronouncing her name incorrectly, Toria Love. She was thirty-one years old, same thing happened with her. It was reported to the Birmingham Police, in part, AL.com said that the Birmingham Police Postman Lieutenant Edwards said, investigated believe Love had been killed about 10:00 PM Sunday based on conditions of her body. She was shot once in the leg and it appears that she bled at, bled at that she ran down the hill seeking help. A trail of blood led from the top of the hill to the front porch of one home and led to another home where she, they believed that she bled, bled out. She died looking for help. We, we talked about this, about these, these kind of occurrences. I know that the City Council and the mayor put together some kind of deal where you're going to help renovate some homes in the Eastlake area, but the thing about that is, is I speak for the Eastlake community and that is that we more, we find it more important to have a clean, safe community than to have all of the renovations and all these other things. This comes first, to make us, make us safe first. Not only that, we, I'm just mentioning two, but there are eight others that I can refer to that happened on, in the airport, probably one guy that was killed up there by the school that was torn down, that he laid in the street dead to the point where they, his body was stuck to the asphalt, just laying out there dead. There were another up there on 85th Street, I'd like to remind you about that he was laying out, one of the workers that was, airport workers that was traveling down through there just ran upon him. He was laying there, eight bullet shells around him, they executed him there. I'm not saying that, that we're going to stop murders in Birmingham by doing this, but what I'm saying is that if we stopped the venue, that a lot of these murders wouldn't happen. It's kind of like if you were throwing an event, whether it's a party or a speaking engagement or whatever it may be. If you throwing, if you throwing an event and then you take away the venue, the event may not happen. So, what, what I'm saying is, let's stop this as being, Eastlake being known as a place, a killing ground here in Birmingham, let's just put an end to it this way by blocking off those streets. I talked with the CEO of the airport, the airport said that there's nothing they can do about it because they purchased the property, they didn't buy the streets. The city of Birmingham on the streets, together, we can close those streets. We close those, we close down streets for UAB, whenever they want to build new buildings, we close down streets for protective stadiums, when we want to build that, we close down streets to save lives. That's what I wanted to ask you about today and I wish that I hear back from Councilman O'Quinn, that's my counselor. I'd like to hear back from you about what we can do, how we're going to move forward on this about closing down these streets. Councilor Moore, also, this is in your district, I'd like to hear from you also about closing down these streets. Of course, the CEO of the airport, he have no problem with it. He told, I was in meeting with him, he could tell you that they already have cameras out there, if we thinking about putting up cameras. about putting up cameras, they already had cameras, they stole a lot of the cameras from out there, and they're not having cameras on a level where anybody could get to them, they're like thirty feet in the air, so these are not people who, the everyday people with eight-foot ladder getting these cameras is more to it than that. And the only way that we can, we can close off these streets are not by steel fence, what they claimed they used once before, they were stolen, but we can close off these streets by using concrete barriers. That's the only way that we can close them off, and we can have the police keep these people more responsible about what they're doing up there, because not only are they killing up there, the drug sales up there, the stolen cars up there.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, we appreciate you for bringing this to our attention, and I know you've given, asked for some response from Dr. Quinn. Dr. Quinn?
I'll keep it brief, that's been my position for a long time, that we should not be maintaining streets in that area. It's basically abandoned parts of the city, and, you know, everything that you've stated, you know, we see happening there, in addition to people using it as a dumping grounds for all of their unwanted ways. So, I've long had the position that those streets ought to be paid, ought to be blocked off, and I would like to see, you know, if it's necessary for the city to vacate those rights away, for the airport to assume responsibility for, you know, policing and maintaining those areas, then I think that needs to be on the table.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walker, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Did you have something, Counselor? All right. Mr. Clerk, next speaker.
Jordan, is it Croft?
Good afternoon, Mr. Croft.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone, thank you all for having me here today. Again, my name is Jordan Croft, I'm a citizen of the Enan Ridge community here in Birmingham. Sorry, my name is Jordan Croft, and I'm a member of the Enan Ridge community here in Birmingham, Alabama. I've resided in Enan Ridge since 1995, when my family moved here. I've lived in that house my whole life, for the most part. My concern here today is because of our transportation systems here in Birmingham. Over the past few years, there's been decline in quality to the MAX bus system. Community members have reached out to try to get some of these issues addressed and fixed, it seems that the issue just continues to get worse in that situation. The recent changes to the bus systems included the introduction of the Express Bus System. Birmingham also adopted the Birmingham On Demand System powered by VIA. There were complications with those systems, one, because the Express Bus System is operated by MAX, but it is considered separate from MAX, therefore, it's a separate fee to ride those buses. They only service a very specific section of Birmingham, so it's not really accessible to the entire communities, especially the Ninety-Nine Neighborhoods. VIA also is a very limited space, it serves the downtown areas and the Avondale areas, the north Birmingham, Enan Ridge, Fountain Heights areas, it only serves between seven PM and eleven PM, so it is not useful to our community at all. Recently, MAX has started making changes to the bus routes that go into specific neighborhoods, the Seventeen, the Forty-five, the one that affects me personally is the Eighteen Fountain Heights, they want to discontinue that bus route for reasons that have not been explained. In that stead, they want us to use VIA's and Birmingham On Demand services. Now, I've started contacting these different locations and businesses to see how this would work out, and contacting VIA, they mentioned that they at this time have no plans of increasing their availability to that neighborhood, so they only intend to continue working from seven PM to eleven PM, which does not allow us to get to work. With that bus system missing, we have no way to get to Central Station and then transfer to our other buses that would get us to work. Buses such as the Seventeen and the Twenty-Five are being affected, I personally work at Jimmy Hale Mission as a community and volunteer coordinator there, through the AmeriCorps program. One of the issues that we have with this system is that you do have to catch the Express Bus to get to that side of Birmingham, which means you're paying the fee to MAX system for their services, a dollar fifty a route, or three fifty for a day pass, then the additional dollar fifty for the Express Bus both ways, which adds up. Now, with the introduction of the Birmingham On Demand System, which is another one dollar fifty for those services, we are paying three separate companies for transportation within one city. I did calculations on the price changes that would take place with this, normally with a monthly bus pass from the MAX bus system, you pay fifty-six dollars per month. With the addition of Birmingham On Demand System, which only does a weekly pass of, I believe it's fifteen dollars a week, and the inclusion of the Express Buses, my personal expenses for public transportation in the city of Birmingham, not including weekends, has gone from fifty-six dollars to two-hundred-and-nine dollars. That would start to take place starting on May fifteenth. The concerns that I brought up, I did speak with Tavoris Foster at the BJCTA Administration, and he's been helpful in getting me some information about some of these changes. It seems right now that there hasn't been quality communication between the MAX system and the Birmingham On Demand System, as they're unfamiliar with what changes VIA is intending to make to their services, and as I mentioned earlier, VIA has mentioned when I spoke with them, that at this time, they currently do not have plans to make any changes. So, this will leave our neighborhood completely unserviced by the transportation system here in Birmingham. First, I would ask that if you all have the power, or if you know how we as citizens can work to make sure that services restored to our neighborhoods and not taken away on May fifteenth, it would be much appreciated. Secondly, if it's not possible to remove these changes, if it would be possible to make the monthly bus pass or the weekly bus passes that MAX already charges us, apply to the VIA and Express Bus Systems. It does not make sense for us to pay three separate companies for a service that has been serviced in Birmingham for decades now, and serves a small section of the city as it is. In addition to this, and I could speak so much further on the issues that we do have with the MAX bus system, but I want to stay focused on this, when I did speak with Tavoris Foster about these things, I told him that with all three services, we're paying about nine dollars per day, just to get to and from work. The remarks that was made to that was that nine dollars is common for most cities in the southeast region, and when I did my research on that, I found that that was not true. The city of Atlanta does have about a nine-dollar-per-day system, if you choose to pay separate fees through that, but that is also because Atlanta services about one-hundred-and-twenty routes and train services within their city. They also serve their city from 5:30 AM to 1:30 AM. They have a much larger service, so it makes sense that they would charge a bit more. I've lived in New York City for a long time, for a monthly pass, you pay around two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars for that, but that is twenty-four-seven access to buses, trains, and ferries. It does not make sense for the city of Birmingham to charge you two-hundred-and-nine dollars a month for limited services, and when I say limited services, I don't just mean the limited amount of time we have from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, I also mean the fact that a lot of these buses don't have drivers. Sometimes the Eighteen Fountain Heights does not run at all. You have no choice but to take an Uber or a Lyft to get to work, you're paying fifteen, twenty dollars to get to work, and you can expect that same charge in the afternoon trying to get home.
Mr. Croft, thank you so much for bringing this information, you've given us a lot of detailed information that I think is very valuable to us. We do have our Transportation Chair, and I do know you were at, when you were at the MAX meeting, when they made, announced some of these changes?
Yes, so, I would encourage you to continue talking with Mr. Foster at BJCTA, and, you know, if necessary, his supervisors. I can tell you that the changes that have been proposed are, you know, while they may move forward and be enacted, that won't be the end of the changes, because, you know, in a nutshell, Birmingham's public transportation system has needed a major overhaul for a long time. It has not worked for the majority of the population for many decades, really, and, you know, having headways of forty-five minutes, sixty minutes, ninety minutes, is just not usable unless you have no other option, and we, as the city of Birmingham, are trying to work with BJCTA to move the public transportation system in a direction that is both, you know, convenient and reliable for all of our citizens. I will tell you that under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, places like Enan Ridge cannot be abandoned in terms of public transportation. The BJCTA, as a transit authority, is under obligation mandated by the Civil Rights Act to serve that, you know, population. So, we have been in conversation with BJCTA about the changes that they are proposing, and while, you know, the folks that you spoke with at VIA may not have been involved in the conversation, the discussion here is about expanding that existing zone, so there are two service areas for Birmingham On Demand, a west zone and an east zone, and there, because of the changes in the bus routes that BJCTA is proposing, what we're looking at on our side is about expanding the VIA service area, or the Birmingham On Demand service area, to accommodate those bus routes not being operated anymore. I totally agree with you about the fare system, and how having all of these different fares for the Express versus MAX versus Birmingham On Demand, that is not where we want to be. It is the circumstances that we find ourselves in currently, and there's an active effort to figure out how to resolve that situation, because, again, we want the public transportation system to be convenient, and having to pay, you know, three times, as many as three times in order to use the different components of the public transportation system just increases the barrier, not just in terms of the cost, but in order to, you know, go through three different transactions. So, I hear you, I agree with a lot of what you've, you know, presented to us. I think, you know, a lot of folks are aware of those issues and aren't satisfied with, you know, those circumstances, and want to continue to work to improve the system. You know, all of that being said, I'm not telling you, you know, to stand down in any way, in fact, I'm encouraging you to stay engaged, especially with BJCTA, I mean, in a way, you are backing up the same things that I am saying, you know, as the Chair of the Transportation Committee, working with our Birmingham Department of Transportation. So, thank you for, you know, coming to talk to us about it, and please stay engaged.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Croft, thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Richard Reed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Reed, how are you?
Good afternoon, I'm fine, thank you, Councilman. This is my first time for the council, so I don't know all the protocols, but anyway, a president, a pro temp, so. I'm here, I didn't come here to talk about the water, but I'd like to make one comment about the water, is that I know all of you know and are aware that the tops, Birmingham is one of the top cities with quality, that offers quality water, and also, the people that are getting these thousand and twelve-hundred-dollar bills, that's possible, because I found out in the rental properties, not the waterworks problem, it's the tenant and the landlord or the homeowner, if the commode is old, when they flush the commode, that little flap does not go all the way down, and so water is constantly running, seven days a week, twenty-four hours, and you do that for a month or two, and you will get, I've seen it happen, so that's the biggest problem with these large bills. I'm here because of trash. I've heard a lot, a lot of you talk about you have, you know, cleanup in your neighborhoods, but if we would keep it clean on a weekly or daily basis, we wouldn't have to have all of these special days to clean up neighborhoods. Now, my problem is, I'm the owner of 3822, Thirty-Eighth Avenue North, North Birmingham. Now, when the city was picking up trash two days a week, that was fine, and at this resident, there are about ten people in that house, and they have a lot of trash, but they always put them in plastic bags, and they would put them outside, and the city would pick them up. But I don't know who came up with this, and the idea of having this new trash system that they have is fine, where the truck picked up the trash can and dumped it in there, but instead of coming twice a week, they went to one day a week, and a house with ten people, one day a week is not enough for their trash. We were told that they, and all their trash won't fit in that one can, and apparently, they didn't do any type study, and I understand this is a problem all over the city, not just in North Birmingham, but when you, somebody told us that you could put it in the back, and then the big folks, you know, the big trucks would come along and pick it up. So, we start putting it back there, but that was not consistent. They would come, they only come once a month, and like March and April, they didn't come at all, so the trash is piled up out there, and the people in the neighborhood calling me, complaining to me, and I said, well, you need to call the city, because that's their job to pick the trash up. Now, I've also been told that they don't have a lot of trucks working, they, some most, a lot of trucks are broken down, and they don't have enough employees, and so, but anyway, the tenant called the city, like in March, and of course, every time she called, they would give her ID number to follow up on, and so, sometimes that worked, and sometimes it doesn't, but we, and we need a, and I have even agreed to buy, they said you could buy another trash can, well, they actually need two, but they started the program without being, not offering trash, because they said they, once they complete it in the city, then they'll look at how many they need, so you can't even buy a trash can to go with the one that they gave the tenant, and of course, I would be glad to buy that, but I can't even buy that. So, trash has been piling up back there, and the Health Department sent me a letter one day, and I, and I called them, and they wanted to know what was going on, and I explained to them, I said, the city changed the trash program, they only come once a week now, rather than twice a week, and it looked like they would have kept coming at least two days a week until they were able to get the trash cans and give the citizens an opportunity to buy the extra trash can, because in this situation, one, you know, one, once a week, doesn't fit everybody, so, and I'm at the point now where I'm not sure what we can do about the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. We do have representation from the mayor's staff that manage the Public Works Department. Chief?
Yes ma'am, Madam President. Couple of things, one, thank you for bringing the challenges to our attention. We're going to be providing a few updates to address some of the concerns. One, the mayor's gonna be bringing back to the council and the public recommendations about being able to accelerate the purchase of an additional trash can sooner. Two is the support in terms of both bulk trash pickup that we'll be providing across the city to really help alleviate some of these very aggressive areas that have excessive amounts of litter. The third thing is our code enforcement efforts that we're gonna be providing back to the council and the citizens as well, so I want to make sure that our GA team has your contact information, so we can provide you with some of those details, but the council will be getting those updates, and then we'll be providing those to the citizens as well. be providing those to the citizens as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
I hope you have a good day.
Thank you. At this time, we do want to thank our officers who are on duty today, Officer Cedric Pinkert, Kiana Suddles and Jason Hicks. Councillors, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I approve adjournment.
Set.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.